It is seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners together tonight. This, the November session of the County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to ask you to help us this evening. If you do have a cellphone or pager, please turn it off. This is a legislative session. The body of legislative body of the County of Williamson. Mr. Lynn Sutton is our Sergeant at Arms tonight, so if you would help us with that, we'd appreciate it. We also have as our guest tonight, the Bethlehem United Methodist Church Tiger Club PAC number 597, Den Number Six. And these, their Den leaders are Jeff Benson and Joel Lawler. And I'd like to recognize these young gentlemen. James Benson is one of the members. So James, would you stand as I call your name? Preston Gates. Rest is not here. Garrison Horn. This is Joe's young son. Colin Lawler. Jamison Reagan. There we go. Jack Brenner. Not here. Okay. Nicholas Galworth must not be here either. Taylor Ayers. Noah Feld. And also Bryce Smith. They, there's Bryce. Bryce was letting us know he's for sure here, so let's, let's give these young men a round of applause.[111.11][111.11][applause] Tonight, as we open the meeting, we'll have our invocation and pledge to the flag, led by these young men, so I'd ask you, at this time, if you would, to please stand.[125.75][125.75][inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're so thankful for the day. We thank you for the blessings of life and for the beauty of the season. We thank you for these young men that are here tonight as part of our meeting. Father, bless our country, bless our President, bless our leaders and our troops as they defend us across the world. Watch over us, care for us, be with us tonight in the deliberations in this meeting. Bless us, protect us, and forgive us when we do wrong. It's our prayer in Christ's name. Amen. Ms. Lane, would you call the roll, please, or report the roll?
Twenty-three present, one absent. Commissioner McCord.
Okay. Commissioner McCord is still in rehabilitation, so we'll remember him. We'll be missing him this evening. Approval of minutes of the regular October 10th, 2005 County Commission meeting. Copies were sent to each commission member. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, Commissioner Walton, second. Commissioner Cook. Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Walton.
I apologize. I was going to call you, and I noticed I left my minutes at the office. There was a mistake given under the roll call. Let's see, let me find it here. Under present, it says Bob Barnwell and Jeff Bivins. And that needs to be changed. I believe it was Jeff Ford.
Okay.
So I'd like to make that correction.
Thank you, sir. Other corrections, suggestions on the minutes? Commissioner Hayes?
In the reports, it mentioned that the Country Gala benefited on October the 29th at the Brentwood Country Club was to help raise money for the SRO program. It is to be for the Crime Stopper Program, which would benefit SRO.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Crime Stoppers is enough. Thank you.
Okay. We'll make those two change. Other changes to the minutes? Thank you. All in favor, approve of these minutes, these changes, say aye. Oppose? So ordered, minutes adopted and amended, corrected. Introduction, acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. These are the minutes from the October '05 meeting of the Highway Commission. You've received those. I'll entertain a motion to accept them. Commissioner Mills, a motion. Commissioner Wilson, a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. Like to ask each speaker to come forward to the podium, please. Give us your name and your mailing address. The first one is Michael Walker, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Walker. I live in Franklin in Chestnut Den subdivision. I want to speak just a few minutes on the future plans for the BGA property. I'd first like to bring before the Commissioners several recent polls, which all show a large, significant majority of Williamson County voters favoring the preservation and the active participation of local governments in preserving local battlefields. In a county recreational facility survey conducted last year, 57% considered listing, listed on the survey a park commemorating Civil War battles as a high priority. And in a Franklin voter poll, 74% considered, said, "Do you support or oppose further preservation of the Franklin battlefield?" And they also, "Do you believe that Franklin City has a responsibility to protect the Franklin battlefield and other historic resources in the city or not?" 78% said yes. Another question, "Would you be more likely or less likely to support public officials who advocate preservation of Franklin's history?" And 71% said more likely. Only 12% said less likely. And in a recent poll on the Tennessean, 60.2% when asked, "Which of the following do you support for a future use of the old BGA site?" 60.2% said to be torn down by the county and made into a battlefield park and open space. And it's easy to disregard polls when they don't confirm one's own beliefs, but taking these polls together, they do show a significant amount of Williamson County citizens favor the preservation of Franklin and Williamson County battlefield and government help in that. And I just want to finish with a little bit of a personal story. My family goes back to the early 1800s in Williamson County. Unfortunately for me, my family, Mom and Dad took me away to Atlanta when I, soon after I was born. But every year, we would come back to Williamson County and fish and see the sights and meet the people. And I knew early on that Williamson County was where I was going to raise my family. When I married an Atlanta girl, I figured that dream was probably over. But when I brought her here and she saw it, and we saw, we knew what Atlanta had grown into. We'd seen the cultural and the historic and all of the identity of where we lived erased in the name of progress and in the name of growth. That we soon moved here and we're raising our family here now. And we don't want to see the same thing happen to here. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Ray Campbell. I live at 707 Amherst Court, Franklin, Tennessee. This is Dale Cantrell, which is a parent and a supporter of Franklin High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of the parents and on behalf of all the people across Williamson County who love and support Franklin High School. We've just finished up another successful season at Franklin High School. Now let me say this. It didn't end up exactly the way we wished, but it was still a real good year. And I think we can all be proud of Coach Greg Clayton and the effort of all the young men who wore the maroon and white during 2005 season. It takes a lot of things to make up a winning football program. It takes hard work, it takes players, coaches, cheerleaders, band members, and a good student body. And all support from the community. But make no mistake about it, it all starts with you people right here. I'm here tonight to thank you, with Mr. Cantrell, the members of the Williamson County Commission for your continued support of Franklin High School. At a critical time when we needed funding for our new football field, you all stepped up and approved the money to get the job done and to get it done right. I especially want to thank Chairman Houston Aaron and Commissioner Barnwell, who, who has been with us on this project from the beginning. I'd also like to thank Mr. Clyde Lynch, who always takes a no-nonsense approach to helping get things done for the overall good of Williamson County. And finally, I'd like to thank all you, the members of the Williamson County Commission. At the end, we couldn't have done it without your help and final approval. It hadn't been too many years since Commissioner Lynch wore maroon and white.[673.67][673.67][laughter] In the fast-paced world we live in today, we sometimes don't take the time to stop and say thanks for all y'all's help. That's what I wanted to do here tonight. Because of your support, we now have a great football field. And we're, in the near future, we'll have a beautiful new school building we can all be proud of, too. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chairman Nairns and Commissioners. I'm here tonight representing the Heritage Foundation to speak to the preservation of the houses on Everbright and also the other historic buildings at BGA. But in particular, the houses on Everbright, since those are up for discussion this evening. I wanted to report to you that the Historic Zoning Commission this evening voted to recommend historic overlay zoning for those houses. So that will, now can proceed on. The Tennessee Historical Commission has determined that the Everbright Street and that those houses on that street comprise a district of homes that is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. So if anyone had any question about the historic significance of those, I did want to report that. I spoke with Calvin Leahy, who I think is kind of the go-to person on historic renovations and rehabilitations here in Williamson County. Is highly respected. He said to tell you, if I would, that he finds those homes to be of great value in that location, that he thinks the preservation of those homes, giving the private sector a chance to preserve them, would be a win-win for everyone in, in the county. That he would think that they were a great investment and that he personally would be interested in them. So I wanted to let you know that. And his experience has been, when investing in historic properties in Franklin and Williamson County, he has had a 1,000% increase on those properties. The Heritage Foundation Board voted this year that the preservation of the historic resources at the BGA campus would meet their top 10 priorities in preservation for this year in Williamson County. And I appreciate this opportunity to come before you.
Your address for the record, please.
My address is 410 Water Press Drive, Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Rick Warwick, 3169 McMillan Road. That's between South Hall and Bingham. I just want to kindly second what Mary has said concerning the BGA, particularly the Everbright and the houses on Everbright. As a body, I want you to think about that those houses are now part of our history, even though they were built, many of them in the 20s. BGA is no longer on that site, but to a lot of people in this county, that is part of our history, part of our 20th century history. There was a historic battle there, but we shouldn't, I think, tear down the houses. And if anything, they should be returned back to the private sector and let's start collecting some taxes on that property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tom Curl. I live at 111 Hampstead Lane, Franklin, Tennessee. I have a letter that unfortunately, I didn't make 30 copies, but I'd like to present to the Board for extra copies later, if I may. Basically, it's a letter of introduction of who I am, my business partner, Warren Baggett. We own the Rare Prints Gallery in downtown Franklin. We also have a company in the name of W1N Investments, and we buy and restore significant old homes. And we'd be very interested. We are very positive about the restoration of at least four of the five homes on Everbright. As an example, we also have, are restoring the house around the corner, 200 Battle Avenue, if anybody would be interested in that. Obviously, we're involved in the community. We're involved in historic preservation. We too have the same concerns that many of you have of preserving our heritage and preserving old homes like they have on Everbright. Some issues that I worry about is there's obviously, if you've looked at the properties lately, there's been some deterioration. There's tarpel ins on one of the properties. I'm concerned about the, having historic overlay and the time delay that it might take to, to move the houses. And I agree with moving them into the private sector. Obviously, I'd like to have that opportunity to work with those properties. But I think deed restrictions may be another way that we could go on those properties, that we can move them into the private sector and still accomplish a lot of the same things. Again, I appreciate the time. And if anybody has any questions, I'd like to leave this letter of introduction about my partners and myself and some of the things we can do.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the citizens' communication this evening. So we'll move on to the section of the agenda, communications and messages. Mayor Anderson? Commissioner Moon?
Just briefly, I would ask the Chair to recognize the mayor of Franklin is joining us tonight, and I'd ask the Chair to recognize his presence.
He's, he's planning on speaking, so we're going to introduce him at that time. Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could I ask George Badon to join me up here? Several weeks ago, Mr. Badon asked me to do a proclamation on the Retired Teachers Day, School Teachers Day, and it is with this that I would like to read this into the records and give this to, to Mr. Badon. Whereas America has always placed its major hopes for the future on education as a mean of improving and developing the potential of the individual. And whereas there are approximately 250 Franklin Williamson County retired teachers who have dedicated their working lives to uphold this concept and the tradition. And whereas the Franklin Williamson County Retired Teachers Association has given out 25 scholarships and recently awarded $4,000 in scholarship funds to two local students for academic excellence. And whereas since 1992, the Franklin Williamson County Retired Teachers Association has awarded a total of over $12,700 to the county's youth. And whereas it's appropriate to acknowledge the debt of gratitude to these former teachers, that it therefore be resolved that I Rogers Andersons, Mayor Williamson County, do hereby proclaim November the 18th as Retired Teachers Day and encourage all of the citizens to acknowledge these retired teachers who have given in themselves both personally and professionally to our county's greatest resources. And with that, I will give this to George, who is the current, George Badon, who is the current president of the Retired Teachers Association.
Thank you, sir.[1187.25][1187.25][applause] Thank you, Mayor Anderson. And while I'm here, I'd like to recognize our other officers who are here tonight. Joyce Smith is our vice president. Ms. Smith, would you stand up, please? And she, she was a Franklin Special School District product. And Eleanor Hall, our secretary. She's also from the Franklin Special School District. And Robert Hall, I'm sorry, Robert Cullen. He's from the county, and he is our treasurer. And Ms. Mills is, is also here, and she's one of yours and ours. And she is our legislative council lady. And we appreciate everything that you all are doing for us. And I'd like to say, too, that this coming Friday, we're having our next retired teachers meeting, and we meet at the Limestone Baptist Church at 11 o'clock. So all those 250-plus retired teachers, we would love to have you come out and be with us and, and join in the effort that we have to honor and, and help the children and future retired teachers of Williamson County. Thank you, sir.
In this area, where are you going to introduce, Mayor Miller?
You can do it on the reporter, either one. Mr. Chairman, thank you. If I could, ask Mayor Miller, Franklin's mayor, to come up. He has some remarks that he would like to make in regard to the efforts that the city and the county and the state put forth on, on the Hurricane Katrina. And I appreciate him taking time out tonight to do that. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. And to the greatest extent possible, I'll keep my remarks short. I got a call and asked if Franklin would be able to establish a shelter for Katrina evacuees totaling about 500 people. We made a quick search of available spaces in, in the city and said, yes, we could do that. About a week later, got a call from the Red Cross saying we need to put it into effect, that we indeed needed to open a shelter. And again, to accommodate about 500 people. At that time, we put together a task force of people on the, on the city side and, and a task force was created on the county side to, to convert a vacant office building and warehouse into a suitable shelter. What happened after that was nothing short of miraculous. In a matter of 72 hours, a fully stocked kitchen, which was in existence but extremely filthy, was cleaned. Offices were cleaned out. Furniture was moved. 15 showers and a shower room, along with heaters, a sewer line for those showers, sleeping accommodations for 40, 400 people, a children's nursery, both indoors and outdoors, internet communication totaling, I think we had about 50 workstations, internet connection, two phone systems were established, and a, an area that was set aside for animals who may have been traveling with the evacuees. That occurred in 72 hours. And no small measure, the citizens of Williamson County in general and in particular, employees of Williamson County Government pitched in and made this conversion. To this day, I don't know who was in charge. But everyone that was there saw the work that needed to be done. They pitched in, and it was accomplished, as I said, in 72 hours. The shelter operated for 60, for 46 days. We sheltered 190 people, but in excess of 500 people received services through the shelter. Such things as getting their FEMA registration numbers, received checks, signed up for employment. A medical clinic was established. There was always at least a nurse on duty and most often, a doctor on duty to meet the medical needs of the people. I, in my opinion, this shelter was a shining point in, in the life of Williamson County. It was even all of the, I saw people from virtually every department of Williamson County Government present. Some of the hardest workers, and I know I will not know their names, but some of the hardest workers in there were trustees from the jail. They were in there. They worked hard. They were as dedicated to making this a first-class facility as, as any of our other citizens and employees. And I know it's difficult and it's probably dangerous, but there's two Williamson County Government employees that I would like to single out for special recognition. And that's Troy Buckley and Bill Jorgensen. These two gentlemen spent countless hours at the shelter. For many times, at the very beginning, Troy was the, the shelter manager. Very much organized the activities that went on in the shelter. And Bill, it was just a miracle, the telecommunications that he set up. These two gentlemen had help. There were others there. They didn't do it single-handedly. And that was the beauty of the whole shelter experience, is that it was a cooperative effort among governments as well as citizens. But those two gentlemen led the charge, and, and it would have been difficult, if not impossible, to have developed a shelter of the quality that we developed in the time that we developed without those two gentlemen. So I wanted to particularly point out to you and acknowledge to you the, the hard work, the dedication, and the experience of those two gentlemen. There are many other people. There were countless other people. Best estimate is that we had over 2,000 volunteers involved in the operation of the shelter over the time that it was open. So this is truly a, a joint effort of all segments of Williamson County. And in many cases, it was also, Davidson County people were represented. So we are, on behalf of the city, I want to extend our appreciation to Williamson County Government, to the cooperation of government, and particularly to the employees of Williamson County. I have with me, and I'm not going to unfurl it because it is rather long, we had two banners created, and they hung over the doors of the shelter. And they say, "Welcome to Williamson, welcome to the city of Franklin and Williamson County." And then it has the, the seals of both the city and the county on that, on this banner. This was, these banners were the first things that the evacuees saw when they stepped off the bus that first day. And so I'm not sure what we're going to do with ours. So I certainly don't know what you're going to do with yours, but I do want to give it to you, so for display at appropriate time and place. And again, thank you to the government for your support and for the support of your employees.
Under communications and messages, we, we have some housekeeping items that I'd like to take care of this time. Resolution number 15, dealing with surplus property, needs to be moved forward in front of resolution number 14. So we'll take resolution 15. It's been asked to move that before resolution number 14. Any objection to making that move? Commissioner Barnwell, you, you'd indicated 15.
No, I think 16 is the one we want.
Okay, all right. So correction, we'll move resolution 110516 in front of 110514, addressing the property on the Old Battleground Academy. Any, any objection to making that move? I see no objections. So we'll hear 16 immediately following 110513. I think that's it. Mayor Anderson?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'll have David give you all a financial overview.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet tonight, we have three items that we normally present to you if you're consideration. One of those is our monthly report for September for the Cool Springs Conference Center. To my knowledge, this is the best report we've received since the center's been in operation. Last month, we had an awfully good month. We received 27,000. This month, we received... This month, we received $55,935. So it's like we're on the right track there for this year. We also have included your monthly budget report for September. Uh, again, a little early in the season, but, uh, you can see that things are tracking there, uh, as predicted on our budget and, uh, everything's in line. And then the third item is the monthly report for October for the privilege tax report. Again, we're heading towards a record year. Uh, the deficit on the schools due to the appropriation we made in July, uh, should be recovered within the next month if we keep on the same pace. And so everything's looking good there. Any questions, Mr. Chairman? I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions, Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, David. Mayor?
Thank you. Last Thursday, many of you journeyed up to Nashville for the news that was, uh, released by the governor and the commissioner, uh, Kispin, from the economic development. Several of you traveled up there and heard the announcement, uh, tonight. Uh, there'll be a package that's to my right, Diane's immediate left. Before you leave, we'll ask that you pick that up. Anyone wishing to sign the original resolution, we'd ask you to sign it tonight. We will be filing that resolution to look at the pilot program that we have laid out towards the Nissan representatives to the state. For many of you have asked the question that, uh, what involvement did, uh, did we have? Some, w, length of period of time, we have been, uh, talking with, uh, third-party representative and never once did we ever talk to Nissan until that, uh, just really that day, the day before. Uh, we were dealing through the state of Tennessee, through the governor's office and, and Commissioner Kispin, uh, Mayor Miller and myself from early on of this year, were involved in some of the, uh, preliminary, um, workings. The, um, fingerprints are all over the documents that you will see. This coming Thursday night, we will be having a special, uh, meeting for our tax study, property committee and budget committee. I have initialled off on that to present that to the, those three standing committees and hoping that all of you will attend, uh, to hear the discussion, to answer any of the questions that is in the documentation that you may have. So that we can, next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, there'll be a special call meeting that, uh, we've asked, uh, you to attend, that has been advertised, it's in today's paper, 6 o'clock next Tuesday, that's the 22nd, to take this, uh, vote, uh, on your intentions on the pilot program. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got to report. I'll try to address any questions. The material is there. I'll ask Diane to pass those out.
I'm still waiting for the resolution to be.
Right.
Everybody that wants to sign it, if they can do that, then I'm going to get filed and go make the copies and make the packet come through.
We're going in a little bit different, uh, because of spe, of the, uh, call meeting that I've had to do on, for this coming Thursday. We'd like, if you want to sign it, we've got enough, we could go ahead and file it. But anyone else wishing to sign it can, so we can get it to Ms. Anderson so that we can get it back to you tonight.
Thank you, sir. What time is that meeting? So the meeting, the joint meeting on Thursday, Mr. Mayor, is it 5:30?
That is correct.
Here? In here?
It'll be in here at 5:30. I'm sorry, I didn't announce where it was going to be at. Be 5:30 in here for the tax study, property and budget committee. We will separate ourselves after you've heard the presentation, answer the questions, so each one of the committees can vote. And then the county commission will be next Tuesday at 6 o'clock in here for the one and one, the only item we'll have. And I know some of you, that may be an inconvenience if you're going out of town for vacation, but we needed to get this up and, and, and on the docket.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything to say, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. School superintendent, Dr. Sharber?
Good evening. The, the big news for us recently has been test scores. Uh, we got our value-added scores reported in the paper recently and, um, of course, they didn't report our achievement scores, which are, definitely are better scores. But I wanted to walk you through just some brief information. I did bring for you a notebook that has the report cards for the district and every school in them, if you want one. I'm not going to force this on you, um, 'cause you may or may not want, really have an, um, a desire to go through this. But if you want to take one of these notebooks, they're over on the cart, they're by Ms. Hayes, and just, there's 24 of them, so grab one on your way out if you want one. Uh, these notebooks are organized with the district report card on the front, the elementary report cards alphabetically, the middle school report cards alphabetically, and the high school report cards alphabetically. All of this information is available on the state of Tennessee Education Department's website, you know, if you really want to look at it that way. But it's really difficult to look at schools together on that website, 'cause you have to click on a page and click back out and click on a page and click back out. So the information is available digitally, but I find having it in print is a little bit more helpful. And some of you may want to, to have that information and you're welcome to take that home with you. But I did actually create a PowerPoint, but we couldn't find the cord to attach the computer to the machine. So, uh, people are out of place that know where things are. So I ran these off for you. And just quickly, I'm going to walk you through what I think is the important information in these report cards. The first thing is a system profile, that's the first thing you see in the report card. I think one thing that we take for granted that, but it, but is actually quite important is that all of our schools are accredited by Southern Association. If you looked on the state website at other districts, many districts are not all accredited by Southern Association. Some of their schools are, some of them are not. So I think that's an achievement in and of itself. Our schools are all listed as safe. I think that's important to families today and to all of us. 93.8% of core courses are taught by highly qualified teachers. The No Child Left Behind Act requires that be 100% by next year. So we're well on our way. Uh, basically, the only courses that we have that are not taught by highly qualified teachers are high school courses, where a teacher teaches four sections of science and one section of something else, for which they might not be hi, highly qualified. We're allowed to do that by the state of Tennessee. I don't think we'll be allowed to do that next year. We're going to be stretching it with some of that. Uh, the attendance at kindergarten through eighth grade, 96.2%. The state only requires 93%. Attendance, 912, 95%, which is pretty phenomenal attendance for, for, uh, high schools. 93% is what's expected by the state. Cohort dropout, which is the group of students who started in the ninth grade who are still with us in the 12th grade, 5.3%. The state expects that to be 10%. However, the graduation percent was 89.8%. You know, they couldn't just round that one up. They expect 90%. We were, we were very close there. Per pupil funding, I thought you'd be interested in this, uh, per average daily membership is that $6,865. That $6,970 is the state of Tennessee average. Uh, local, but you need to know this, that funding we have locally is 56.5%. Get 30, uh, whopping 39.2% from the state and a generous 4.3% from the federal government. So you can see that the citizens of Williamson County and, and your legislative body are doing the lion's share of funding what we do in education in Williamson County. And you need to know that. Flipping to the next page, these are the scores that were reported in the newspaper. But I thought what was important for you to see was the progress that we made from one year to the next this last year. In 2004, in reading and language arts, we actually had a D. Uh, the mean game was the minus point two. The state expects you to have at least a zero or better. The zero gain, which means, mean gain, which means that child grew a year, will get you a C on the report card. That's the expectation. The state of Tennessee expects every child to grow a year. They don't really expect us to grow better than a year, but if you can get children to grow better than a year, you can get an A or a B. But what they expect is what is, it looks like a C. And when the state, uh, in previous years, put grades on other things on the report card, because in previous years, they actually gave you a grade for attendance, a grade for achie, uh, well, they still give you grades for achievement, grades for graduation rate, those things, if you made the expectation, you got an A. Value added's the only place they've ever had in, on the report card where you have to do better than the expectation to get an A. And that's just important for you to know. But anyway, we are very proud that we went up to a B this year in reading, language arts, because that means, uh, on an average, our children grew more than the expected amount in reading, language arts across the district. In math, we had a B last year, we have an A this year. In science, a C, we have a B. In social studies, we had a C and we have a B. So I'm very proud of the progress that was made this year on the value-added scores, um, in Williamson County Elementary and Middle Schools. And it says K through A, which is a little deceiving, because really, these scores are only comprised of fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade scores. So there really no kindergarten, first, second or third grade scores in this amount. The only way the third grade scores are involved is so you have a way to grow from third to fourth. So you really only have the fourth and up. Make sure I didn't, okay. On the high school, I just wanted you to notice that, um, for ACT scores, we're above what we were expected to do, um, for, for a three-year average. This is the interesting thing, the state predicts the score for us and all of those things, and then you, then we get to see what we do. We don't know what the state's going to predict and we don't really have a way to find out what the state's going to predict, 'cause we don't have access to their database. But, so it's just kind of a shot in the dark from year to year, if you're going to actually do better than what they predict, because you don't get to see that predicted score until they put the report cards out. However, with the ACT, there are two tests that are preludes to the final ACT called explore tests and plan tests. And we have been giving those for several years in Williamson County. So it does give us a way to anticipate what students might need to do in order to make the best grade possible in the ACT. So we do have some things in place in Williamson County. I think that's one reason our ACT scores continue to be as high as they are and continue to be above what the predicted scores would be. Then on the other high school tests, these are the required tests, uh, by the state of Tennessee, the gateway and end of course tests. The algebra, biology and English tests are what the federal government uses under No Child Left Behind to determine if we're making adequate yearly progress. And for algebra, uh, English and Engli, both Englishes, we were above what was predicted. For biology, we were a little below, and for math foundations, not detectively different. Again, we don't know how to, we don't have access to their database to determine what that predicted score is going to be. So we are continually just taking a shot in the dark when it comes to the way they do the value added for high school. And on the final page, just overview, I wanted to let you know that the district did make adequate yearly progress under No Child Left Behind in all areas. Uh, five of our six middle schools had all As in achievement and the one, one middle school had all As and one B, but that particular middle school also had all As in value added, which none of the other middle schools had. So kind of balanced that out. Uh, five of the six middle schools did improve in value added. The only one that didn't was the one with all As, 'cause last year, they also had all As in value added. 16 of the 20 elementary schools had all As in achievement, which is pretty phenomenal. The other four had As and Bs, with one school having one C in achievement. So an achievement across the board for Williamson County, almost every single school had all As. Uh, three elementary schools had all As in achievement and in value added, and that's a first for us. All other, all other elementary schools improved in their value-added scores. And really, this was the best report card Williamson County has ever received, even though there are some places, uh, very few places, but some places where we still have some work to do on our value added. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions of, uh, Director Sharber? Commissioner Wilson?
I just would like to add to what you said and compliment the school system and all those that represented our students out there. I think this is certainly something that we shouldn't congratulate you for, and we're very proud.
Well, thank you. And it, it really is the work of everyone in the community. The students work hard, teachers and staff work very hard, uh, parents work hard to support education in our community. Our school board has provided a lot of stability, so we've been able to take initiatives and move them forward without jumping from one thing to the next thing to the next thing. And this body has provided funding. So it takes everybody working together to have success, and I thank you for that.
Other questions of Dr. Sharber? Commissioner Smith?
Dr. Sharber is a husband of a schoolteacher in the county system. Uh, I often hear the frustration of, and I know you deal with this all the time, with a very high achieving, uh, student base, uh, the difficulty of continuing to, to move them upward. Uh, if, if you're already at an A, it's hard to go, if you're already making 100, it's hard to go beyond that. Uh, would you address that a little bit in terms of these requirements?
I will, because of, um, this is how the value added gets calculated, is that growth from one year to the next, and it's calculated only on one achievement test that we give each year. Um, and, and the best way I can tell you is this, if, if a student makes 100% on tests, and we do have children who do that in the fourth grade, and they make 100%, which is all they can make in the fifth grade, that's a C. So the highest they can make is a C. So in our schools where there's a great deal of affluence, and in our schools where there are very high achieving children, it is much harder to make the value-added growth. Now, I think Cs can be made, because I think students can, can score one year this and the, next year the same, which is all it takes to have a C. But I do think we have schools that would have a very hard time making As under value added, the way they're calculated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other, other questions of Dr. Sharber? See none?
Great. And please, take a notebook if you want. These are yours. They don't have your names on them, but they're yours. Thank you.
Any other questions of Dr. Sharber on anything else in the operating, going on in schools right now, before you leave us? I see none?
Okay.
Thank you. Hospital report, Dennis Miller?
Mine's going to be pretty short tonight. Uh, the only problem is, Sheriff, if Laura busts her toes that high-heeled shoe and hits me in the back of the head, arrest her. It's getting towards Christmas and I'm a Christmas baby, so I've got some levity for you. Mr. Lynch, my older brother probably played you, uh, Franklin played Joe Burns back in those days. I went to the high school that opened in 1953. I went to the school. My older brother went there. I did. My younger brother did, and my two nieces did. And they're still there, and they're 12 and O, by the way. Class A. I'm just going to be real nice, but, uh, if everybody knows history of Tennessee, it's known as Bloody Tennessee. Every foot of this ground was a battlefield. And she's told me if I got into what I want somebody to lot for, 'cause I thought somebody's fed their horse there, she's going to kill me. So I'll leave that alone. Uh, Steve Smith, I think in your packet, the one we sent out to the commissioners, it has a thing, a foundation exec gives back to the community. Was that your graduation picture from college?
Uh, uh, two things I have for y'all. We finished our strategic plan retreat Saturday. I would like to get each one of y'all a copy of the strategic plan. I think it'll, um, uh, make you proud of our hospital, what we're going to do. Mr. Lynch, uh, Mr. Chalfont, uh, Mr. Little, Steve, uh, Mr. Steve, his Mills, uh, they were there, they saw it. I think you'd be very impressed. We'd like to get you a copy of it. Follow-up to that, we will do a master facilities plan. We will be branching out. We're not going to do like Maury Regional or some of the others. We're not going out of Williamson County, but we will be branching out. You figure out where we're going. Uh, then after that, we're going to do a master site plan. And we'll, uh, have those copies available to each one of y'all, 'cause they're our bosses. Uh, our annual report will come out in December. I think you'd be very impressed with what we've, were able to do last year. This year's no-growth year for us. We've got construction, we're holding our own, but we don't have any expansion. We've got construction, we're holding our own, but we don't have any expansion until we get those beds open. You know, we're still going on diversion. I think we went on diversion 15 times in about the last six months because we just don't have beds. But everything's going fine, construction's doing well, we're still doing well financially. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Any questions of Mr. Miller? See none? Thank you, Dennis.
Just glad I live in the county.
Any other committee wishing to report or commissioner wishing to report anything at this time? Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to remind the property committee that, that we do have a, our regular monthly meeting on Tuesday, the 22nd. We'll go ahead and meet at 5:30. We will adjourn if we're not done with our business to come in for the special called meeting, and if we need to re-adjourn, we'll re-adjourn after the special called meeting. But I did want to remind property committee members that in addition to Thursday, we are on, on Tuesday, the 22nd, and we will have an agenda.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hayes?
The municipal solid waste board will not be meeting on Tuesday as usually, usual planned because of the county commission meeting. I also like to announce that there is a shred day at our Williamson Recycles Center Saturday. This is an opportunity for anyone in the county to bring things that they might have that would, important papers and documents that would help protect against any identity theft. Come up on sentry court next to the jail, bring them, and they'll be shredded. Also, we had a wonderful turnout for our household hazardous waste. The official car count was 1,575 vehicles that came through in that time. So that's a, really, a good number. We appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Anybody else? Moving on to elections and appointments, county mayor, the Woodford County Regional Planning Commission, there's been a resignation, but the mayor does not have a recommendation at this time. Comment, Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should have reported on this earlier so I wouldn't have to come back up and you listen to me. But as you know, Dotson Randolph won the election as an alderman for Franklin, and under that agreement, she offered her resignation and I'd accepted that. We've had several people that have indicated they'd like to serve in the regional planning commission, and I'd like to share with you that I have shared with a couple of you that have called me. We need a female for the county planning commission, and that is what I'd like to have. I'd also like this individual to be in, in our unincorporated area. Dotson was the only female that we had on the planning commission, and I'd very much like to replace her with a female in the unincorporated area. Now, there are several people that have indicated an interest, male and female, but some of them live in the city, and I, I just think it's very, very important that we try to find a female inside our county area. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, we've not had an opportunity to make some phone calls and check some people, so it'll probably be January before we get to you.
Thank you, sir. County commission, appointments to the beer board. We have the southwest section, Dewey Garland term expiring. The nomination is Dewey Garland. The northwest section, Preston Coffe is the term expiring. The recommendation is Preston Coffe for a three-year term expiring November '08. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner Lynch is our second. Commissioner Walton, the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption of the Beer Board of Williamson County Notaries. You each have a list of the notaries that have been presented to us by Mrs. Anderson. I'll entertain a motion. Any changes, anything on that, Ms. Anderson?
No, so they have not been.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the list as presented. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Cook, the second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption. Unfinished business, excuse me, consent agenda. Have the consent agenda that's been presented to you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Commissioner Mills, the second. Commissioner Walton. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the consent agenda. Unfinished business, resolution number 11057. This is formerly resolution number 10056. Resolution to approve an easement to be granted to Mill Crofton Utility District on property owned by Williamson County Government. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval with amendment.
Second, Commissioner Lynch. Commissioner, say, this went before what committees? Budget Committee report? Thank you. Property Committee? Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, I'd like to issue an amendment, please, to change the reference to the two taps to the value of $13,100.
Motion is made and seconded to amend this, to change the value as suggested by Commissioner Hayes. Second was Commissioner Barnwell. Discussion on the amendment?
This was due to the good suggestion of Commissioner Moon and the good work of our county mayor in rather than giving the two residential taps that we would possibly not having, have a great use for in county government, that we have the dollar value that would be of great significance to us. They also did agree with our county mayor that they would honor Commissioner Brockman's request about the, the paint of a choice of colors that would suit us. And they have been very good to work with, and this is a piece of land that has very limited usage otherwise on the hill.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Green?
This is in reference to, I report is 5-0 as amended by the Budget Committee. And I'll offer that amendment when you get through with this one.
Okay. The amendment, the amendments on the floor, as I understand it, motion to amend to include the tap value of $13,100 with no reference to the number of taps, as I understand it. That's the motion, that's the amendment. It's on the floor. Any other discussion on the amendment that's before us to change that wording? The amendment is loaded on the machine, so if you're in favor of the amendment as presented, press yes button. Opposed, you know button? Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner.
This is the second amendment, and this one's been amended. I just want to be clear. It's been amended that the amount is $13,100, but that is in the valuation of taps, not in, in funding. Is that correct? Or actually, is this $13,100 what we're going to get paid? I'm just not clear.
It's a, it's a tap value based, based on the information. It's on the, this second sheet over here, Commissioner, is amend to include tap value of $13,100.
Are we getting taps?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brockman, that is the value that when we have a program such as Parks and Rec or some facility that the county may need, that we will have a value, a credit if you may use. They are not paying us that, but it's $13,100 that they allow, they will allow toward a water tap, if you, if you want to call it that.
Okay, so it's, that's what I wanted to make clear. It's a credit.
It's a credit.
Toward a tap if we ever need one for Parks and Rec or?
Any government.
Any government function.
That's correct. Could even be schools.
Other questions, Commissioner?
I think that's, that clarifies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this? Okay, let's, let's go, let's go back. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote on this? Anybody voted? Court of vote, please?
23 yes.
Thank you very much. The amendment, 23 yes, you are no, as amended, so we're voting on resolution 11057 as amended, clarifying the tap situation value. If you, any, any discussion on the motion as amended? I see none? If you're in favor of this, press yes button. Opposed, you know button? Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please?
22 yes, one no.
22 yes and one no. Thank you. Motion is adopted. Okay, moving on to new business. Public hearing. We now will have a public hearing regarding resolution number 11058. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign all necessary documentation on behalf of Williamson County to endorse Arrington Volunteer Fire Department to purchase a pump truck. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to address the commission on this, on this public hearing for this resolution, please come forward, identify yourself, give us your name and address, and we'll have you, give you an opportunity to address the commission. Please come forward if you wish to participate in the public hearing. I see no one. Public hearing is closed. Resolution number 11058, resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign all necessary documentation on behalf of Williamson County to endorse Arrington Volunteer Fire Department to purchase a pump truck. Commissioner Moon? Okay. Second, Commissioner Mills. Budget, Budget Committee report, Commissioner Green?
5-4-0 against.
Very good explanation. Commissioner Moon?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to yield the floor to my co-commissioner, Commissioner Wilson.
Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you so much. The Arrington Volunteer Fire Department, this resolution is in regard to signing a document on behalf of the Williamson County to endorse the Arrington Volunteer Fire Department to purchase a pump truck. They have been working on means in order to have this pump truck for a good long while. They have now secured a lease purchase agreement with Ashkosh Financing. I do want to say that the Williamson County citizens will have the opportunity to view and, and to see this lease if they would like. The lease purchase agreement between the Arrington Fire Department and Ashkosh Financing will not, they're, we as Williamson County is not subject to the terms, but they are responsible for this financing. I do hope that we will approve this. They worked very hard to have this fire truck, pump truck.
Okay. Discussion on the resolution. Ready to vote? All in favor of resolution 11058? Press your yes button. Opposed, you know button? Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please?
23 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, 23 yes. Moving on to zoning, we have a public hearing regarding resolution number 11051. Resolution to adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance originally adopted on April 18, 1988 regarding the regulation of accessory structures. I'll now open the public hearing for this resolution 11051. If you wish to address the public hearing, please step forward, give us your name and address, and you'll be allowed to address us at this time. Anyone? I see no one. Public hearing is closed. Resolution number 11051. Resolution to adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance originally adopted on April 18, 1988 regarding the regulation of accessory structures. Commissioner Moon?
Move for approval?
Second, Commissioner Walton. Planning commission recommendation?
It was 8-1, 1 against, 1 abstention.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Moon?
I'll briefly introduce it. Lee is here, Lee Sanders, that can go in more detail. We've always had a requirement for accessory structures to be located in the rear of lots, that is behind the house. They would have to be located there and observe the side setbacks. This is, this worked most, most of the time. However, in cases where we had large lots, for example, greater than five acres, a house could be situated to either enjoy the view shed or to meet the requirements for the septic system. In such cases, it was difficult, if not impossible, to have an accessory structure behind the house. So what this allows then is for accessory structures to, to, to be in the side or, or front yards on lots that are greater than five acres or more. They still have to meet the side setback requirements. Have I said that right, Ms. Sanders?
Any, any questions of Commissioner Moon on this resolution? See none? Ready to vote? 1105? Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'll start looking here. Ernie, I'm sorry, excuse me. Commissioner Williams?
Commissioner Moon or Mr. Sanders, does this, does this allow dwellings or side buildings to be put in the front yard of, of homes that are larger than five acres?
Yes, sir, it does.
Just, just as long as it meets the setback requirement?
The setback for such a situation is 200 feet. If someone wants to build a garage on greater than five acres and they want to place it in front of their house, assuming the house is much further back than 200 feet, but the accessory garage could be as close as 200 feet to the front property line, and it would still have to meet the side setback requirements of the residence, which is 50 feet. Thank you.
Who else the machines cleared? Who else wanted to address this? Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just clarification again about what, why this is, this change is necessary in terms of what situations have come forward to make this change necessary?
Well, as you know, in many of our tracts of land greater than five acres, and the placement of the residential structure, the house on the property oftentimes takes the advantage of the, of the hilltop, as Mr. Moon accurately portrayed, the different scenarios where the house is located a good distance from the road. And we were tied up with this requirement that 40-acre piece of property and the house is 800 feet off the road through the trees and on top of the hill, and a person wanted to put the swimming pool beside the house. And our regulations didn't allow that. They wanted to put the garage, detached garage, say, on the driveway before you get to the house. And according to our regulations, that didn't work. And so for many years, we wrestled with that. Oftentimes, the use of, of an exempt agricultural structure may have been brought into play to sort of overcome this, this requirement. And we felt that it was overdue to try to address it in a regulation, so we placed it on as an allowance for greater than five acres, put the minimum of 200 feet as a front setback for an accessory structure if it's gonna be in the front yard.
Okay. So it, so in my, in thinking about this, most of the issues have come about perhaps on, on properties that are actually over five acres sometimes. In other words, it, it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because when I start thinking about just the five acres and someone siding these accessory structures in front of the dwelling, I, I get a little bit rattled because I, I can't really quite figure out why we might allow that. But when you, when you're thinking about 100 acres, obviously, you need more flexibility.
Well, even on, on a five-acre lot, when you think that a, a lot only has to be 200 feet wide, that makes a five-acre lot about 1,100 feet deep.
Okay.
And, you know, 800, 900 feet back, this puts you basically in the middle of the property, which is, you know, where people, the five-acre lot may want to be. And the use of those accessory structures then, not being in their front yard greatly, you know, prohibits a problem. Often cases, our lots have, you know, trees, winding driveways, hills, you know, where You know, we very seldom have the flat, open lots where this probably would not be appropriate. But in, in the regulations that, you know, stall us out with, with trying to make, I think, common sense decisions based on keeping a lot of your constituents happy.
And the planning commissioner who voted against it, their point, perspective was?
Cannot answer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other, other questions on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the face of my resolution, I noticed that we had a date of September the twelfth, which this had been printed earlier. Does that need to be addressed, or has it been corrected on?
No, it says September twelfth, and it, it's, I assume that's a typographical error?
It had been prepared in anticipation of that and was not changed.
Okay. Without objection, let's, let's change, now therefore be it resolved that that be corrected by the clerk to read the fourteenth day of November, two thousand and five. Is that what?
Thank you.
Is that what needs to be? Any objection to that correction? I see none. Other, other discussion on this resolution before we call for the vote? Okay. If you're ready to vote, eleven-oh-five-one. Yes, sir. Commissioner Moon? Excuse me, Commissioner Green?
Question, I have, I'm, I have a problem with this. Would there be any landscaping or something to hide that garage from the front of the property to, I mean, I just have a problem with a garage in the front yard. Pool, I don't have a problem with on the side. But the garage in the front, I just, I almost own five acres, and I'm looking at, golly, you know, even if I put it up there, if I put my house up on the top of the hill, my garage would still stand out like a sore thumb. I just got a problem with that. And I just wonder if there's anything in there landscaping wise they have to hide the garage or what have you. Is there anything in the regulations to say they have to do that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Other questions? See none? Eleven-oh-five-one is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wishes to vote? Record of vote, please. Commissioners Brockman? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-one yes, two no.
Twenty-one yes, two no. Motion is adopted. Okay, we're ready for public hearing. Resolution Number eleven-oh-five-two, Resolution to adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance originally adopted on April eighteen, nineteen eighty-eight regarding regulation of wireless telecommunication facilities. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to address this body, please come forward, give us your name and address. We'll give you an opportunity to address this. Anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing on Resolution eleven-oh-five-two? I see none. Public hearing is closed. Resolution Number eleven-oh-five-two. Resolution to adopt amendments to zoning ordinance originally adopted on April eighteen, nineteen eighty-eight regarding the regulation of wireless telecommunication facilities. Commissioner Moon?
For approval?
Second, Commissioner Little. This went before?
Planning Commission ten-four-zero against.
Thank you, sir. Report, Commissioner Moon, please.
Mr. Chairman, in May of this year, this Board of Commissioners adopted the amendments to the wireless telecommunication, telecommunications section regarding communication towers. A few weeks later, the state amended that law that, in prohibiting, prohibiting the county from doing essentially a lot of paperwork, and needs analysis, permits, fees, and what have you. So long as the antenna does not increase the height of the tower. This is a resolution to enact that state law into county standards.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Wilson?
Just out of curiosity, what is the height that we now require? And that means that it would not go any higher than already the required area. I don't remember that.
Well, Williamson County did not set a height maximum. We have set a regulations in place that tries to encourage towers to be less than a height that requires lights. We found that to be a very prominent issue on the rural landscape. And so our regulations are set up so that new tower construction can go through a rigorous review that, that the body put together, the, the appointed committee that studied this last winter. And, and, and then the staff can approve those once they meet all the requirements. The tower has to have a clear fall radius equal to its height, et cetera. It's still in place that any tower that is tall enough to require lights for aviation, which is generally at two hundred feet, that at that point, not only are the same requirements would have to be met, but it would also have to go to a special use public hearing of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the regulations that we passed back in the spring, Commissioner Moon, those are, will still be in effect. Is that correct? Does this supersede or change what we, we worked, you know, we had all that work on?
I think it modifies it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it doesn't really change anything. It, it just says that we don't have to do that paperwork if the height of the antenna does not exceed the height of the tower.
Okay. But the rest of that, but the rest of the work on, that we did is still, will still be in effect?
That's, that's correct. We had written it and adopted it. Then the state law was changed. And we, Mr. Cook worked with us during the whole process and wrote with this basically these changes to, to make our ordinance then fall in line with the new state law amendments. And so it's, there's some really minor changes to it in that respect.
Mr. Chairman, if I might note, Mr. Sanders did a lot of work on this resolution. Had several meetings, and it should be commended for his diligence.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Barnwell?
The resolution has, also has the twelfth day of September in it.
Correct. We'll make the same correction, fourteenth day of November, two thousand and five. If you would, any objection to making that correction? I see none. So ordered it to be corrected, Madam Clark? There's no other discussion. Eleven-oh-five-two is up for adoption. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wishes to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three yes. There are no motion unanimously adopted. Resolution authorizing, this Resolution Number eleven-oh-five-nine. Resolution authorizing the issuance of an interest-bearing education projects one-year capital outlay note, Series two thousand and five of Williamson County, Tennessee, in the principal amount not to exceed seven million, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said note, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal thereof and interest their own. Seven, three, twenty-five, okay? Commissioner Green? Second. Commissioner Smith? Motion, second. Budget Committee report. Commissioner Green?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, please.
This resolution is to, on the issuance of an interest-bearing educational projects outlay note. And it's to provide the funding for certain improvements. We were trying to purchase two school sites and, and upgrade two others. And also, there was some signalization, it's two locations too, I believe. But this, this note is to cover those expenses of the seven million, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. This note will not be issued, and will we not go out for selling this note till spring? Which will lead me into the next resolution when we get to it. But that's basically what we're trying to do here, is, is get a note out for the seven million, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, Commissioner Green, on this resolution? I see none. Eleven-oh-five-nine is up for adoption. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number eleven-oh-five-ten. Resolution declaring the intent of Williamson County, Tennessee, to reimburse itself in an approximate amount of seven million, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for certain expenditures relating to rural school projects with the proceeds of tax-exempt notes or other debt obligations to be issued by the county. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith? Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation?
What this is, is going to give us, this is a resolution to allow us to use our own funds at the present time until the note is issued to pay for some of the expenses prior to the note being issued. But in the process of this, when the note is issued, the funds that we are used from the Educational Capital Projects Fund will be reimbursed when the note is issued. So this gives an opportunity to spend those monies prior to issuing the note, and it will be refunded.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Green? I see none. In favor? Eleven-oh-five-ten, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number eleven-oh-five-eleven. Resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and five-six Circuit Court Clerk's budget by five thousand dollars. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Williams. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, please.
What this is, is the county clerk's office needs some new computer equipment, and the funds, five thousand dollars, will come from filing fees.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Green? I see none. Eleven-oh-five-eleven is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Excuse me, twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three yes. Motion unanimously adopted. Under the other section of the agenda. Resolution eleven-oh-five-twelve, Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a lease agreement for the Lockwood property. Commissioners Hayes and Lynch?
Approval?
Second. Motion made and seconded. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against, with some address corrections. I don't know if they've been made.
Thank you. Property Committee report? Property Committee?
Seven, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioners Hayes and Lynch?
What that does, it just allows us to, we need more space out there, and it allows us to use that space for all these activities we have out there. We're trying to purchase six acres out there, but we can't reach an agreement with a gentleman on it, so this is the next best thing.
Commissioner Lynch, or Mayor Anderson, what is the dress correction we need to make on this resolution?
Houston, I do not have that address with me. I'd be glad to get it. It's the building right to it. We noticed it at the last meeting. We don't have, the address that's on there is one address off.
So-
We will correct that before-
Within, you've heard the mayor's report, we need to correct the address. We don't have the exact address, but any objection to, if you could, get that mayor and furnish it to the clerk, and then we'll make that accurate in the resolution. Any objection to that? I see no objection. So Ms. Lane, if you'd get with Mayor Anderson, and get that, make that correction, please. Other discussion? Commissioner Hayes?
As Clyde said, there's a great need for maintenance space or parking areas, so we can maximize or extra revenue our, our own space. So I hope you will entertain letting the mayor negotiate this possible lease.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any commission on this resolution? Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, address this, Commissioner Hayes. Is this, is this intended to lease this property like on a yearly basis or an event basis?
My understanding is a yearly basis, but I will yield to, to the mayor. I guess it would be whatever agreement would, would fit Ms. Lockwood's preference.
We're going to lease it for four years, one year annuals.
Renewal.
Renewables.
Have you already reached a part, part of an agreement?
All this is doing is giving me that flexibility to go ahead and negotiate with her.
Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Williams asked one of my questions. The second question is, is this property appropriate for long-term use? And if so, would we, would we have a need or an interest in purchasing this property instead of the property we've been trying to negotiate for? Would this serve the needs?
Mr. Chairman, can I-
Go ahead, Mayor.
It's not for sale.
So never mind. This one's not for sale.
This piece of property, if you were turning it into the Ag Center, it's directly on your left, immediately on your left, facing the closest part of the long lane. It's a building that's not been hap, that's not been used other than she's got some storage, storage merchandise in it. We were trying to negotiate for the other property that leased, went to someone a little bit higher. This one will allow the Ag Center and Kenny to keep some of his equipment in, put some of our equipment in. It's a short-term fix, hopefully, four to five years. Maybe we can get something else out of it. We're going to have to make some improvements to it. But it is to get us out of the bind that we're in.
Thank you.
But it's not for sale, she said.
Commissioner Lynch, follow up?
To let them authorize the mayor to do the negotiating, we don't have to worry about that because he's tough and tough when he gets to negotiating that money.
Anything else? Any other questions? I see none. Eleven-oh-five-twelve is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wishes to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number eleven-oh-five-thirteen. Resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property and equipment at auction. Commissioner Hayes?
Approval?
Second. Second. Commissioner Mills was the second. Just, just see here, Municipal Solid Waste Board?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Property Committee?
Seven, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
We will be seeing additional properties for surplus a little later. The reason this one is standing alone, it has been some landfill equipment that has been used. We know that from the past, a better price has gotten when it enters through the heavy-duty auction that is particularly designed for things like this. So Mr. Bumpus is very astute to get this where we might benefit the most.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Hayes on this resolution? I see none. Eleven-oh-five-thirteen is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted who wished to vote? Walk quickly, Commissioner Shalfont. Record of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Now we're going to pull forward- Now, we're going to pull forward. Resolution number 11-05-16. This is resolution declaring certain real property located on the old Battleground Academy campus as surplus property. This has been sponsored by several. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Moon, the motion. Commissioner Brockman, the second. Property Committee report?
Seven-four-zero against.
Budget Committee report?
Motion was withdrawn.
Okay. Explanation, Commissioners Moon, Brockman, all of you that sponsored it. Commissioner Moon?
Mr. Chairman, the Property Committee has been together for, this is our third year. And we thank the county commission for allowing us to stay together and get the various inputs from the different groups that have an interest on this property. And before I go into it, I really, I want to thank the members of the, present members of the committee. I also want to thank the past members of the committee, Commissioner Walton and Commissioner McCord. Commissioner Walton did a lot of work, tromped around the old houses and the buildings and what have you. Although he's not on the committee this year, he should be also recognized. The question comes down to, do we want to keep the houses or not? If we want to keep the houses, then we're going to have to put in between $100,000 and $150,000, say at $100 a square foot, to restore those houses. And then, once we restore them, do we have structures that are compatible for use with the county offices? Keeping in mind that these are resident houses. If not, if we want to tear them down, then what we're doing is, we're tearing down a piece of history. We're tearing down houses as they start from the end, show an evolution of the architectural design of life in the county. And we're tearing down something that can never be replaced, because once it's down, it's gone. The argument can be made, and it's a good argument, that once we buy property, we should never sell it. And that is a good argument. The price of the property continues to increase. However, given the size of this property and the depth of the lot, say it's about 100 to 150 feet deep, could we build a building that could utilize that property? And if we did, would it be consistent with the neighborhood, or would be like shaking hands with Tar Baby? There has been a lot of interest expressed in restoring these houses and keeping them. And what we would like to do, the Property Committee has unanimously endorsed, let's sell the houses, get our money back, but put a restoration on the facade, restriction on the deed. Now, as Mr. Cook pointed out during our committee meeting, there are several ways we can do this. We can ask for historical overlay, we can do restrictions on the deed. I think restrictions on the deed would be the simplest way to do it. All of you that live in a subdivision are familiar with restrictions on deeds. Commissioner Brockman can tell you about, for land trust, how you can put a restriction on a deed to prevent development. So that would be a quick, easy way to do it. That would allow the buildings to be returned back to their natural state. And then, if the city wants to proceed with a historical overlay, then all power to the Board of Mayor and Alderman of Franklin, they can have at it, and we will not be embroiled in that discussion. I would ask that you consider this motion and that you pass it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would ask for support of this resolution. This is an issue that has repeatedly come back to the Property Committee. I think there's a term in the preservation world, it's called sort of benign neglect. And so, you have some residences that have historical value that the county doesn't have a use for, and the best way to preserve them is to return them to the private sector and allow a neighborhood to basically reemerge and be redeveloped and be an asset for the community. And so, I think the Everbright houses are worthy. We've heard from the Heritage Foundation, they support this. And I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. We heard from council, it is, it is something that we can do legally, because we bought the property with money through a bond issue. They reported that to us. And there's really nothing, I think at this point, we've moved forward on one of the buildings on the BGA campus for Middle College, and I think we need to make a statement for historic preservation for these structures, and I think we need to do it now.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to ask for your support for this resolution. In the Property Committee, we discussed a lot of different options. We discussed the historic overlay, and we discussed resolutions of whether or not we wanted to go and formally ask the City of Franklin to go through the historic overlay process, or whether or not we wanted to do this through deed restrictions. I came down on the deed restriction side simply because we've got a degradating asset there. We've got assets that are going to go down every single month, that we do not put money, time, effort, and restoration into those. We don't want to put the county money into these. We need to turn these back into the private sector. They will then turn back into generating tax receipts into the county and turning these back to the private sector, having them restored, which is what the committee was in unanimous assent, that we wanted these restored back to their original facade, back to the community that they were in. This is the best way to do it. I would ask for your support on this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Green?
Yes, to give you some input as to why the motion did not, it's not approved in the Budget Committee, we took no action. Our concern too, and I want to congratulate first the Property Committee for taking action, and I support this resolution, but to explain why the motion was withdrawn in the Budget Committee. We wanted to, the Budget Committee felt that we need to ensure that these buildings are restored back to original. And we didn't want to, in one way, we felt to do that was a historic overlay. And in our discussion, we felt that that was the way to go and ask Franklin to do that. And obviously, Franklin has already done it. But, and this was, it was just an effort to ensure that the restoration of those buildings were done in a proper manner, with what we intended to do and what the Property Committee intends to do. And we left it at that, and we took no action on it. The motion was withdrawn, looking at the historic overlay as one vehicle to ensure that these buildings restored in a manner that they should be restored.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Williams?
My question was to ask Mr. Green why the motion was withdrawn, he just answered it.
Commissioner Wilson?
My question is, is the, will the county be reimbursed when we do it, when we relinquish this as surplus property for our investment? How are we basically given back?
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Wilson. That's one thing that hasn't been addressed yet. When, the next steps after this is these will then be put out for bid, and the intent of the Property Committee is that the minimum bids be set at the appraisal price. At one of our steps throughout all of our committee meetings, we've had these properties appraised.
Yes.
The minimum bids that we would be accepting, that we're going to put in the bid package, is the appraisal price of those properties. So that's a minimum bid that we would accept.
Thank you.
Commissioner Langston?
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to thank the Property Committee in moving this forward. I know that you've worked very hard over the last two years in trying to find a resolution to this. I was concerned when I saw it as surplus property. Commissioner Moon, I appreciate very much the explanation as to how this property can be preserved. I would hope that everyone would vote for this also.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hayes?
I too support this resolution. I feel like it's visionary. Those of us who've been here in Williamson County for a while can probably remember that years ago, if we had driven down West Main Street, we would have seen some houses in this state of repair. If we had looked at the beautiful home behind One Stop Market that sits now with a great value, it would have looked probably worse than these properties. Yes, it will take some money and some talent, but with the right skill and investment, it can return back to some beautiful residents of our area. And then, someday, we may be seen as visionary. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for and seconded by Commissioner Jones. All in favor of the call of questions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Question's been called, we're voting on Resolution 11-05-16. If you're in favor of this resolution, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Has anybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no. Motion is adopted. Now, we'll undertake Resolution number 11-05-14. Resolution to adopt a schematic plan for the utilization of the former BGA campus property currently owned by Williamson County Government, sponsored by several. Entertain a motion. A motion by Commissioner Moon, seconded by Commissioner Ford. Property Committee report?
Seven. Seven-four-zero against.
Budget Committee report?
Five-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Ford, whoever?
I'll take it. Even though Commissioner Green is anxious to get out of here, we'll talk about this one very briefly. Mr. Chairman, as everyone knows, the Property Committee has spent a lot of time looking at the BGA campus, the historic BGA property, and trying to develop and come up with a plan for what are we going to do with that property. We've just passed, and I appreciate every, the support we got for the houses on Everbright, that was a good thing to do. Here's another good thing that we can do. We've toured that property, we've looked at it every way that we could, and we've come up with, at this point, there are two recommendations we're making. These will not be the last recommendations we'll be making on this property. We realize this is not a complete plan. We realize there are some holes, still some things we have to address. But, Mr. Chairman, we wanted to go ahead and put in front of this body the initial stage, our initial plan of some conclusions that we've come up with. As we walk through and as we look at that property, we see the BGA campus. We see what has gone on there. We see the educational uses of that. We respect that that property has been battlefield. We see the BGA campus. And so, what we've done at this point is divide that campus into two sections. The front section, which is the three historic BGA buildings, People's Hall, Coverdale, and Fleming Hall, where as People's Hall and Coverdale are now being used and have been allocated for use by the school system, where they are now going to be putting Middle College High into Coverdale. We're now using People's Hall for Assembly of Science Kits that has saved us tens of thousands of dollars by using that building. We're going to allow them to keep use of those buildings for the current time. County retains ownership, school system is using those at this point. We recognize that we still have to figure out what we need to do with Fleming Hall. We know that that is the big hole in this plan. So the front part, we see as keeping those within the school system at this point. The back part of the property, really from the athletic fields and the gyms that are still there, and including the other out parcels that adjoin that property, those right now, they're being used for athletic purposes, and we think that's an appropriate use for those at this point. We, as, in our last tour, we had men playing lacrosse on there, we have soccer going on on those fields, and we think that's an appropriate use. The Parks and Rec has done a fabulous job of restoring those gyms, and if you haven't been through those gyms, you need to get back over there and take a look at the work they've done in there. Drove by there tonight, and they are, there's basketball going in there tonight even as we speak. The two things that will be going on, on those athletic fields if we pass this resolution is, one, the bleachers will be coming down. That'll make room for more area for fields. Second thing that will be happening is there'll be a fence. That area will be fenced a bit stricter to restrict access, to keep people from driving on those fields, to make sure that our asset does not get torn up. I would ask for your support on this and be glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I just wanted to make one point. When this was brought before the Property Committee and was drafted by Commissioner Moon, one of the things that I sort of want to point out is that this still allows us to do two things. One, it allows us to continue to get public input on the future of this property. It will still allow us to get some expertise from, let's say, an outside consultant perhaps in the field of architecture, because Fleming Hall, I think there is a commitment to Fleming Hall and Coverdale in terms of how they are renovated, in terms of the preservation value. So I just wanted to say that. The landscape plan, you know, we don't have that in hand, and, you know, it's such a lovely landscape. People really comment on the trees and the importance of that front landscape in front of the buildings. And then, finally, I'd say that there is still an opportunity for those who are, have been, continued to speak to the Property Committee, that there is a possibility to have some sort of commemoration for the Battle of Franklin. We continue to get a number of spokespeople from the preservation groups come to us to talk about that. And so, I just wanted to say that there is still an opportunity for that in some fashion. I'm not saying what it would be, but I'm just saying it is part of the history of the property, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to commend the action of Property Committee for coming up with a plan. I know it was hard fought, and there was a lot of different ideas and different ways this could be done. But I still want to point out at this point, we really need to do a better job before we acquire something. We battled over this three years. This is a statement that really should have occurred, and we should have agreed on as a commission five years ago, when the discussions about purchasing BGA property were first outlined. We could have saved ourselves a lot of trouble if we made some type of agreement about the uses of that property way before we spent any taxpayer money acquiring it. Now, I'm not diminishing the new success that we actually have a plan at all, but I also want to point out, this still does not address many, many things. Commissioner Ford mentioned a few holes in the plan. There's a few holes that didn't get mentioned, and Mrs. Brockman mentioned one of them, that there's still a lot of interest in battlefield preservation in the area, and we seem to be going at cross purposes with other municipalities within our county, as well as many of our taxpayers that are willing to put up their own money to help do something. And this doesn't appear to me that we've really explored that. I do realize that there is still some opportunity to do that within the schematic. But my real point is, before we purchase something, we need to study it first and come up with a plan, or let's just not purchase it. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock? All in favor, call for questions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It sounds like it's fairly unanimous. 11-05-14, and just as a matter of courtesy to the Commissioners in the area, Commissioners Little and Commissioners Mills, you are in favor of this resolution, so. 11-05-14 is up for consideration. If you press a yes, if you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Thank you. Twenty-two, yes, and one, no. Resolution is adopted. Let's see. Resolution number 11-05-15. Resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property and equipment at auction. Commissioner Ford?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Moon. Property Committee? Property Committee?
Seven-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
This is some more property, primarily vehicles that declared in surplus and put up for sale. And there is a separate, another attachment that's on your desk that has some additional items that came in just today. So, I want to make sure everybody sees that that, that is on there, and that should replace your current attachment.
So, we're approving the first list plus the two Crown Vics, and then there's additional items received November 14th. So, your motion is to accept all these as surplus?
Yep. The luminous, the desk printer, all of it.
That's the motion, that's the discussion. This, this auction will be Saturday, November the 19th. So, all of this equipment and the earlier equipment, correct, Mr. Coleman? No, this Saturday, November the 19th will be this auction. Any other discussion on 110515? Commissioner Hancock?
Call for question.
Okay? There's, there's no discussion, so we'll, we'll go ahead and vote. 110515, if you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, your no button? Has everybody voted, wish to vote? Record of vote, please.
Mr. Smith?
Commissioner Smith?
Excuse me. Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes. Motion unanimously adopted. Remember the announcements, the meeting on Thursday evening at 5:30 in this room. Pick up your packets before you leave tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. We're in adjournment. Have a great day.